Sheriff.
Ma'am, ma'am, Sheriff, thank you and permission for here today. We appreciate being here. I have with me today our manager of animal services, Joe Hellebrand, our chief of our, not only our jail and our court services, but also animal services, Chief Mike Demoret, and Dr. Sarah Boyd, our lead veterinarian at the shelter. I want to start by personally thanking Matt and Alex for their help in drafting this ordinance. You guys were awesome and certainly I put up with a lot of changes and everything that took place. I also want to thank everyone who's here today, whether they are here in support or they're here in disagreement with this ordinance, because if nothing else, we all agree that we're here for the best interest of the animals. So we want to certainly let everybody know that our citizens have weighed in on this as we go. If you'll permit me, I want to show a PowerPoint that will address the success we've had so far, the purpose and need for updating our current ordinances, and some changes, some of the changes we made after hearing from our citizens and business leaders. So with that, hopefully I won't mess this PowerPoint up, and I'll try not to. So we, just a little background, in October of 2014, the Board of County Commissioners asked the Sheriff's Office to take over animal services. I will tell you that it's been an amazing 39-month journey, and it is, when I say amazing, I mean that in the very most positive sense. It has been awesome for us to be a part of the transformation that has taken place. Our animal services team includes our care center staff, animal enforcement officers, administrative personnel, our incredible volunteers, without them, we couldn't do what we do, our rescue partners, I say the same thing of them, some of them are here today with us, and of course, our incredible community. We have been very blessed to have great support throughout the entire community. When we assume responsibility, we made a strong commitment to make Brevard County a more humane community, to raise the standard of care in our animal care center, to reunite as many lost and stray pets with their owners as possible, and to save as many pets as possible through adoptions, fosters, innovative programs, relationships with our rescue partners, and by educating, uniting, igniting, and empowering our community to become a no-kill community. The success of an animal welfare organization is measured by how many animals they save, what's classically referred to as the live release rate. Prior to Brevard County Sheriff's Office taking over, the live release rate was 55% over a five-year average. In April of 2015, I stood before the same diocese and the commission and announced that we plan to become a no-kill community in two years. Just a point of reference, to be classified as a no-kill, an agency must complete one calendar or fiscal year with an average live release rate of 90% or higher. It was a goal that few people thought was possible. In fact, I often refer back to an article that was written by Matt Reed, who at the time was with the Florida Today, that said, "No kill is impossible." No kill is not impossible. In fact, we have demonstrated that. In 2013, 4,869 animals were euthanized in Brevard County under the former base system. That's an average of 13 animals per day that were being euthanized. In 2014, with us at the helm for only three months, that number was cut almost in half to 2,109 animals. In 2015, we again cut it in half by dropping it to 1,219. In 2016, we saw another significant cut, reducing the number to 317, and this year, or last year in 2017, the number was reduced even further to 160, creating a 92% reduction in a three-year period. The table in front of you shows, at the top, the live release rate for the fiscal years 2014 through 2018. You can see a continual upward trend. As you look at it on a monthly basis, you can see how we started getting there and how we progressed to where we are today. Where in 2017, 2018, our live release rate is 95.79%. So when you consider we went from 55% when we first took over to 95.7%, that's a pretty drastic improvement in saving the animals' lives. Over the past several months, our county staff, Matt and Alex and Scott, have worked with us to update and amend various sections of Chapter 14, Article 2, Animal Control, Brevard County Code of Ordinances. These amendments take into account changes made at the state level and incorporate best management practices to better address issues related to animal control. The changes seek to promote a safe, healthy, and humane community for the citizens and animals of Brevard County. Additionally, the changes will supply the tools and resources necessary for the county to handle the animal control-related issues covered within Chapter 14, Article 2, more effectively and more efficiently. Two weeks ago, a draft of this ordinance was released, and I will tell you that it created quite a stir, and while it was intended to inflame, it actually did us a favor. It actually got a conversation going and got people talking about what the ordinance was going to involve and engage. The draft that was released, as I have told people, it's kind of like being an ice sculptor. Not that I'm an ice sculptor, I think everybody would agree on that, but when you do an ice sculptor, you start with a big block of ice, and you chip away what you don't need, and you're left with a very nice product. That's what happened. We had a draft that we had adopted from another county. We got our hands on it, working again with the county attorney's office, we were able to chip away to what we really needed, and to, quite frankly, what our community could The proposed ordinance, I'm going to give you some distinctions between the current ordinance and the proposed ordinance, as well as some things that are no changes. For example, one of the things that was discussed when that draft was released was people thought that we were going to increase fees from $10 to $25. That was never our intent, that was one of the things that we were going to chip away. We did discuss raising the fees from $10 to $12 for altered pets, and from $16 to $18 for unaltered pets. However, after conversation with our community, after conversation with some of our leaders, and quite frankly, conversations with you, we decided to leave the current licensing fee as it is at $10 and $16. Spay neuter trust fund, using differential dollars. Currently, there is nothing in the ordinance that allows for that trust fund, and the money from that trust fund goes back into the community. It goes back into programs such as spay neuter. It goes into programs for education and everything else. It is exclusive to be used in those capacities. And again, the current ordinance doesn't have anything of that nature. Public education program. Currently, there is no established criteria for a public education program. Our new ordinance puts that into place, and our team is already working on our public education component to make sure that we're able to work in all capacities, especially in the avenue of education and awareness. Tethering guidelines. Currently, there are none. The new ordinance addresses tethering guidelines, which makes it a much more safe and humane aspect. Currently, if you're tethering your dog in what I would call a corkscrew-type mechanism, you now have to transition to an overhead tether, which is safer for the pet, it's also more secure. It'll also, the new tethering ordinance also requires that there is sufficient water, sufficient food, and cover for an animal that's being left outside tethered. Dangerous dog protocols. They are extremely antiquated in our current ordinance. The new ordinance creates current industry standards and brings them up to speed. Three-member dangerous dog council. Currently, there is a three-member dangerous dog council. The proposed ordinance creates magistrate to hear aggressive and dangerous dog cases. Current ordinance has no restrictions on feeding outdoor animals. The proposed ordinance creates requirements, as well as an education component that goes with that. The proposed ordinance creates free training program for community cat caregivers. It also creates tools to address dogs that fatally attack another animal even one time. Currently, we do not have that. Proposed ordinance creates tools to combat dogfighting, creates service charge on citations for training of animal enforcement officers, creates ability to set court appearances for special circumstances and abuse cases, and it also gives deeper authority to confiscate mistreated animals. Some of the concerns that were raised and were asked, is the stray hold changing from five days to three days? No, it is not. It is staying at five days. That was a mandate that from the time I looked at the block of ice, I knew that I did not want in there. I wanted it to stay at the five-day mark. So that is not changing. Part of the ordinance speaks to veterinarians complying with state statute 828.30, which is that they furnish the county their rabies certification, certificates, copies of them. That part is in there, and that part is addressed, it was actually addressed by the state statute in the rabies prevention and control in Florida in 2014. So when we were asked, why would they do that? It's mandated by state statute. The ordinance only mirrors the state statute in bringing that to the table. Why is the stray fee hold going up? The boarding fee is currently $6, and the recommended change is adjusted to $10, far below any boarding facility. In 2017, this fee impacted a total of 96 citizens for a total amount of $2,617. Another question was, does anything in the proposed ordinance have to do with animal dealers, hobby breeders, or occasional sellers? Again, in the big block of ice, that was in there, but it was never our intent to leave it in there. In fact, it was one of the things we knew we were pulling out, and so there's nothing in the ordinance that is before you that addresses that in any capacity. So as you said, I believe each of you, our county attorneys, have supplied you with a clean copy of the county ordinance. I'm going to go through the proposed ordinance that was advertised. We're making or asking our commission to make some motion changes in that, and if you'll permit me, I'll go through those so that you have each of them. The first one, the additional recommendations and amendments. We are requesting the deletion of the proposed Section 14-77, which specifically allows the county to apply for grants and to solicit sponsors and donations. Originally, we had that in. We heard from some of our rescue partners that were concerned about that aspect. When you hear me say they're our rescue partners, they are truly our partners. The things you saw up on that board, the incredible number changes, would not be possible without them. So when talking with them in conversation, we believe this is the right direction to go, to delete that section. Also requesting a modification of proposed Section 14.72 to remove outdoor feeding requirements for dogs and to provide further guidance on the feeding and care of community cats. Again, conversations with our citizens, with our commissioners and everything, we felt like this was an area that needed to be addressed and quite simply, just cleaned up a little bit in its direction. Additional recommendations are requesting that Section 14.52, subsection G, be amended, and that the corresponding sections, 14.52 subsection I and 14.52 subsection J, be removed in order to eliminate the requirement that veterinarians remit animal registration tags and to solely provide for the remittance of rabies certificates by veterinarians to animal services, as was required by state statute. In the initial proposed ordinance, we had in a mandate that our veterinarians would sell our licenses. Our goal is to increase compliance. That's our ultimate goal. Right now, using the models that we have available to us, we estimate that there's roughly 272,000 pets in Brevard County. Of those, only 24% of the pet owners are in compliance. Of that 24%, 58% of those licenses were sold by 36 veterinarians who voluntarily serve or sell our license. So our goal with that aspect was to increase compliance using our veterinarians as partners and making it one-stop shopping for our citizens. We got feedback from our veterinarians. We got asked a lot of different questions about it, and at the end of the day, after hearing from them, it was our opinion that we needed to go a different direction and remove that mandate. And our goal with doing that was, again, our veterinarians are our rescue partners. They are partners in what we do, and they are partners in our success. So the last thing we want to do is put something on them that is not going to, A, only be effective, but B, that is going to hamper what they do. And their concerns were valid, and we addressed that. So we would ask for that amendment, and then recommending that Attachment A be amended to show a $10 fee for an altered pet registration and $16 for an unaltered pet registration, reflecting no increase to current fees. Additionally, I would ask, and perhaps Matt and Alex can help us with this, in any motion to approve this amendment, I would request that you authorize staff to amend the proposed ordinance to provide for these new modifications that I just spoke to you about prior to execution by Madam Chair. In closing, I'll talk about our commitment a little bit. Our team is extremely passionate about achieving our goal of saving homeless pets in our community as we recognize and hold very close to our hearts that taking care of animals in our community is not only our job, but quite frankly, it was a gift from God to us. We love it. We love everything that we get the opportunity to do, and every time we save a pet's life with our vet or our team, we know we forever change the landscape, and we are extremely proud of that. On October 1st of 2016, as I said, I proudly held a press conference to announce that we achieved no-kill status, only 18 months after we announced that goal, two years to the day since taking over animal services. Although we proudly recognize the significance of this achievement, we also realize that achieving a 90% or higher live release rate and recognition as no-kill community is not a designation or a one-time designate, rather is a continued journey that together with our community partners, we will maintain. And as I stand before you today, I'm telling you, we will maintain being a no-kill community. It's extremely important to me, and quite frankly, it's extremely important to my wife, and so I'm going to follow that lead. As I always say, it takes a community to protect a community, without question. It definitely takes a community to protect our pets and our animals. So that is our presentation. I'll entertain any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you, sir. I want to just thank you for taking over animal services, stepping up and doing that. And we had an opportunity to tour it. What interested me is you knew all the dogs' names and their histories. So I think we definitely have a champion there protecting the animals, and I just want to thank you for it. Thank you for all you do.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. On that note, I do have some lights, but I want to mention, after the sheriff's presentation, there was a lot of bad information going around, and I think this might have cleared up a lot of it. I do have 12 cards, in case anybody's interested on the amount of people that are coming up to speak. So if he answered your questions, you know, maybe you would be good with it now. I just wanted to mention that moving forward. But Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I want to thank the sheriff and his staff for all the long hours that they spent putting this together, all the communication that went back and forth, listening to the community, to the veterinarians, the commissioners. A lot of hard work went into this, a lot of thought processes. And I want to thank you for your success in making us a no-kill community. That's a big deal to me. I think it's a big deal to an awful lot of people in here as well. And when the time comes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the ordinance as amended by the sheriff this morning.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Isnardi.
Hi. I know you're a busy man, obviously, and Chief Demoret, I don't know how much more you could possibly be responsible for.
I can give you that.
But I have to tell you, he is one of your top people. He's been amazing, and we have him on the Public Safety Coordinating Council, and I appreciate all of his efforts and his knowledge, and he's fantastic. I think I've told you that before privately, but anyway, thanks for spending time in my office and listening, not just to some of the concerns that we're rolling in by email, but by some of my own concerns. I know, again, like you're busy, but would you mind perhaps sticking around and possibly addressing any of the questions or comments?
Sure, yes, ma'am.
And then I'll reserve, I guess, some more comments that I want to add or delete or clarify.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I plan to stay through.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, I think I'll call up public comment cards, sir, unless you have something else you'd like to...
No, ma'am. Anything we can answer, we'll be here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have Ms. Debbie Rich, and after that, Pamela Saul, if y'all would be ready and Hello, Ms. Rich, if you would state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Debbie Rich, 3555 Aspen Way, Melbourne. First, I'd like to just reiterate that no-kill is not a number. It is not killing any animal that can be treated or rehabilitated. There are many saving up to 100% in this nation. So we're doing good, but I mean, we're still killing some for some crazy ideas. I'd also like to say that I support return to field when it is done properly, meaning any sick cats are treated before going out, and kittens are put up for adoption at the shelter, not thrown out. I also have some concerns about the proposed changes, Section 1444-F2, 1445-F2. It allows for the immediate killing of animals deemed feral or unsocialized with no holding period of any kind. Normally, it takes three days to calm an animal when thrown into the shelter environment with the strange sounds and smells. Enrichment programs should be implemented for all animals in the shelter which are used at other successful shelters. It allows, the current written version that we had, for immediate killing of animals with contagious disease. Contagious disease is not defined in the document. It could mean anything from cats and kittens with highly curable upper respiratory infection, ringworm, scabies, conjunctivitis, diarrhea, or dogs with kennel cough. These are all treatable. You wouldn't kill a human with ringworm, which is the same as athlete's foot, so it shouldn't be a death sentence for animals. We no longer have the high numbers of animals coming into the shelter. We only have one shelter now. And at most times, there is no overcrowding, which provides space and staff time to care for the animals in the shelter. We now have two vets, which we didn't have under the county. Another concern I have is the positive traceable identification through a currently registered microchip in Section 14-4-F3. There are many concerns with relying on microchips. There are currently five universal scanners. None of them have 100% sensitivity. Scanning should be done in a slow, up-close, methodical manner, not just swipe the insertion site, which is normally the shoulder area. Chips migrate around the animal after insertion. Sometimes they come out of the insertion site and are found on the floor later, or out in the yard, not found. For every five-pound increase in body weight on an animal, the odds of missing a chip increases by about 6%. Sensitivity changes based on the orientation of the scanner and the chip. So if you're scanning this way instead of this way, you may miss it. Sensitivity improves with multiple scans. About 21% of shelters only scan one time. 52% of shelters only use one brand of scanner, and as I said, there's five universal scanners. Multiple types of universal scanners are recommended. There are also reports of chips causing cancer in pets, and because of this, many owners refuse to get them. 52% of dogs with chips make it home, 48% don't. This is a national statistic. 39% of cats with chips make it home, 61% don't. Scanners fail and should be tested periodically. Those that have chips may not be registered, even though it's a free service with found animals online. Change of owner increases the chance of outdated information. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rich.
Thank you.
Ms. LaSalle, and Dr. Denise Van Cleef, if you would come forward and be ready to.
Hi, Pamela Saul-Viera. I had requested that a Florida Health Department veterinarian be here today, and I guess one isn't. The reason I asked specifically for a veterinarian is because I received a letter generated by Commissioner Smith's office a couple of years ago from an epidemiologist here who, I'm sorry to say, has no understanding of toxoplasmosis based on the letter provided. I think animal services is a great thing, but I think their primary purpose is protection of human health. The reason we have ordinances is to control animals to ensure the safety of the public. I wholeheartedly support any homes that can be found for these animals, but dumping them back out into the community is not a viable solution when considered in regards to public health. I presented the Rabies Prevention and Control published by the Florida Health. This is the cover letter. This is what they state. "The concept of managing free-roaming feral domestic cats is not tenable on public health grounds because of the persistent threat posed to communities from injury and disease. Allowing cats to roam free is not in the best interest of the community's health, and deliberate release or abandonment of feral or domestic cats is not sanctioned under Florida's conservation and cruelty laws." There are many diseases. Rabies is just one of them. I'm sure everyone heard about the little boy in Orlando who died from contacting rabies through a bat. Bats are one of the threats, but cats are huge. This also came from Florida Health. Rabid cats and dogs in Florida, look at those charts. It is almost three to one unknown cats contract rabies versus owned cats. It is not just rabies, it is also hookworms. Up to 75% of feral cats in Florida have hookworms. Miami Beach had to restore and replace approximately 25 blocks of beach in 2011 due to a hookworm infestation from feral cats. In 2013, Target Zero, who is the consultant the sheriff is using, tried to come into Brevard, but the board voted it down. I think that the policies that we are living under are not for our best interest. I'll get on with the ordinance. Probably the single biggest problem I have with the ordinance is Section 1472, and it's not clear to me whether his comments were that it's completely deleted now or not, but 1472, in the original version I read, number one, "All managed community cat colonies groups must be maintained on private property of the caregiver or with permission on private property of another landowner, including county, state, and federal public property." I think that's very important to leave in there. I want it in there. I think it's very necessary to protect property rights. The definition of animal shelter includes a person who rescues shelters or provides a foster home or facility, any of which places for adoption, whether for a fee or donation or free of charge. You need to maintain control over what you define as an animal shelter. And as an individual, I object to, first of all, the classification of community cats. I think they should be classified as feral. There does not, you need to define it either as a domestic animal or feral animal. We don't live in a commune. And I especially find offensive that qualified community cats are exempt from the licensing stray and at large provisions of this article, and may be exempt from other provisions directed towards owned animals. They need to, the people who manage them need to be held accountable for those animals. I don't think they should be allowed out into the community. I just, I don't see how anyone can totally disregard the Florida Health Department recommendation that they are not tenable from a public health grounds. That is the purpose of animal control ordinances. Thank you. Any questions? I'm sorry.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Van Cleef, and Mr. David Grant, if you would come forward and be ready, sir.
I'm Dr. Denise Van Cleef at 1733 Pine Valley Drive in Melbourne, Florida. I sent you all a letter yesterday about requesting that this ordinance be tabled, because I believe that public comment has been restricted on this. I chair the Dangerous Dog Commission for the county commission and have for the past 14 years. The views that I'm expressing today are my own. Because of the sunshine law, I have not discussed this with the other members, but in regards to the changes of the provisions for the Dangerous Dog Board, I am concerned and wish that there was a vehicle for public comment on the changes. What is going to happen is you're going to take, what we had was one veterinarian, one alternate veterinarian, one dog behavior trainer, one kennel worker, and one alternate kennel worker, all of which are experienced with behavior of dogs, and that's what we do in our meetings, is determine why the dog bit either the person or the animal. And you're changing it for one attorney who has no experience in dog behavioral medicine. And I'm not sure how that's going to work. And I'd like it to be able to be open to public comment and have other people debate whether that is an appropriate way to address the Dangerous Dog Law.
Doctor, what section is that?
That is, all I have is D. I don't know the beginning part of the section.
Doctor, it might be Section 1449.
Thank you.
I believe that's the Dangerous Dog section.
1449, paragraph D. "The board shall appoint a special magistrate to conduct Dangerous Dog Classification Hearings." As Sheriff Ivy mentioned, this ordinance was released about two weeks ago, but it was leaked. It wasn't released by the sheriff's office. So the public really hasn't had input. You've received a flurry of letters and calls, but it hasn't. You've received a flurry of letters and calls, but it hasn't had the advantage of having everyone being able to comment on it in a timely fashion. I also want to state that statute 828.30, Rabies Vaccination of Dogs, Cats, and Ferrets, is mainly concerned with public health safety and states that "Any person who has been bitten, scratched, or otherwise exposed to a zoonotic disease shall be provided with any information contained in a rabies vaccine certificate, but only with respect to the particular animal biting, scratching, or otherwise causing exposure." I believe this statute addresses the public safety concerns of zoonotic diseases of rabies. Rabies certificates are mandated under this statute to be submitted to animal control agencies, but I believe that intent is that if a person is exposed, then the rabies vaccination status of the animal is immediately recoverable by the animal control agency. It is not the intent of this statute, as per Sheriff Ivy, for compliance of registration tags. Now, I know the ordinance has been changed, but we haven't seen the ordinance changes. And again, the public needs to be able to provide input and advise you on what changes may or may not need to be changed. There are other things, but again, time is limited. So I'd like to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Doctor, I do have a question regarding this section, 1449D. I'm reading here that the hearing process shall afford the owner an opportunity for a hearing prior to making a final determination regarding the classification or penalty. And then it goes into quite a lot of detail about the owner filing written requests, and the hearing shall be held no sooner than five days and no longer than 21 days. A special magistrate shall bring the hearing to order. The animal control authority will have 20 minutes to present its case, and then the owner will have their opportunity. What more would you like written into this policy that would make you feel comfortable?
We also allow for 10 minutes of rebuttal afterwards, so that if something is mentioned, then somebody else can rebut it another time in our hearings. We're able to ask questions, and we try to determine what the dog was doing. And for example, we had a case that was brought to us that was a young girl who came up, knocked on someone's door, was lawfully on their front porch. The daughter of the owner opened the door. The dog came out and bit the little girl. And that's what we were presented with. With further questioning, we realized that the little girl was frightened of the dog. She screamed, she grabbed at the girl who answered the door, and that fell under the dog protecting her owner from an assault. And we deemed the dog not dangerous. So I'm not sure if a special magistrate or an attorney who doesn't understand dog behavior is going to be able to pull those specific instances out and determine whether a dog is truly dangerous or not based on its behavior. To make it equivalent, you're going to have to have expert witnesses, and that has been discussed. But I'm not sure on how that will work and how it's going to be fair to both sides. So again, I'm not against it, I'm not for it. I think there needs to be more discussion.
Thank you, ma'am. David Grant? Cindy Wozden, you'll be next, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is David Grant. I live in Vieira, 3368 Lamanga Drive, a stone's throw from this facility. I'd just like to say that I'm very proud to live in Brevard. I've been here since 2009, and what's happened to the animal here in Brevard in respect to being a no-kill, I think it's terrific what the sheriff's department has done. I currently volunteer for the sheriff's department, but my previous comments were more outside of that environment. I just think Brevard's a great place. I think that the animals are well taken care of here, and being no-kill is terrific. I love volunteering at the shelter. I work with the spay and neuter program with Dr. Boyd, and the veterinarians there are very compassionate. They take very good care of the animals. And by the way, kittens are, if they're under, I think, like four months, I believe, they do keep them there for adoption. They aren't just thrown out to the wild after the spay and neuter. So I think what's being done by the shelter deserves, just accolades all over the place. It's great what Sheriff Ivy has done. And I'm not real familiar with the proposed ordinance, but everything that's been done by the sheriff here has really been a great step in the right direction. Nothing's perfect in this world, but it's certainly a good start. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wozden? Jeff Goodwin, you'll be next, sir.
Good morning. Cindy Wozden, President of Lucky Dog Animal Rescue in Palm Bay. My one concern is the no-hold time for the ferals, being the dogs or the cats. Some animals, they appear to be feral, either for whatever reason, they've been lost for a bit of a time period, they've been traumatized by the events while they were lost. And so they do appear feral, but sometimes they're not. Sometimes people are looking for them, and, you know, they have no idea. Some are on vacation, you know, when the dogs or cats are lost. By the time they get back, their animals have already been euthanized because they're considered to be feral. Some of the elderly, they don't know, they don't either have chips in their animals, or they don't know the proper channels to try to locate their animals. If you go ahead and euthanize them, considering them feral and with no hold time, these people don't have any opportunity to reclaim their animals. I've seen myself many animals, we went out and we've trapped because they're considered feral, while they've gotten away from their owners. There's a big issue now with animals being stolen, either for fighting or to resell. A lot of those animals are taken from one county and dumped to another county whenever they realize that they're of no use to them. So some of those owners may not know to look in Brevard County if their dog was stolen from Sumter. So, and then they, and then they're, again, they're traumatized, and they appear to be feral. Again, the issue is already addressed with the microchips. There are several different kinds of scanners. It may not be compatible, and therefore, the owners aren't able to have enough time to locate their animals, and I just feel it's a big disservice to, you know, euthanize without any hold time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Jeff Goodwin? And Teresa Clifton, you'll be next, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Godwin. I live at 1835 North Highway, A1A in Indian Atlantic. I'm a veterinarian, and I am the Chair of the Governmental Affairs Committee for the Brevard County Veterinary Medical Association. We had a meeting last Thursday night and voted unanimously to oppose the proposed changes based specifically on Section 14-52, paragraphs G, H, and I. We expressed our concerns with Sheriff Ivy and appreciated his flexibility in understanding our position. I heard him say today that he was going to remove paragraphs H and I and amend paragraph G, so that instead of requiring us to sell licenses, it would require us to turn over rabies vaccine certificates, as in state law. However, the copy that I received this morning when I walked in still had paragraph G, H, and I in it. Can I be assured, based on his verbal statement, that those would be removed?
Yes, sir. We got a renewed one with those things out of it. Correct, county attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, it's been removed.
Okay. Then I will not take up any of your time telling you why we oppose the changes as written. I'll just make one comment on his proposal to have in our county ordinance that we turn over the rabies vaccine certificates. Since that is in state law, I'm not sure why it would need to be in the county ordinance. So my preference would be just to delete that paragraph as well. Keep it simple.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
Teresa Clifton? And Mr. Glenn Beckett, you'll be next, please.
Good morning. I'm Teresa Clifton. I'm Executive Director of the Central Brevard Humane Society. Sorry, I seem to be losing my voice. I have worked for the Humane Society for 14 years now, and I chaired a feral cat commission that the county commissioners put out in 2004. It was quite an interesting endeavor. I have watched people struggle over the years. I'm a fifth-generation Brevard County resident, and animal issues have always been tumultuous at best. And I had some opposition to what was sent to me originally and changed and what have you. And I have spoken with the sheriff about my concerns, and he has relented on many of those, seeing the differences of, you know, what is, what works and what doesn't. And I don't want to waste any of y'all's time this morning either. I just want to commend the sheriff and his team for being willing to, I'll just say, be a target, because no matter who runs the county shelters, they've always been a target. And it is a difficult, at best, thing to do. If you've never run an animal shelter, you have no idea what you are dealing with when it comes to things like zoonological diseases. And yes, ringworm is treatable, but do you have a facility that can isolate it? You get ringworm off of a hair follicle. I have cat hairs on me from my cats' home I was trying to brush off. My point is, it's difficult at best. Parvo is also treatable, but in a shelter environment, the risk of the majority, you can't take for the one. So if you can find a rescue that can take them in, or you can have a foster that's willing to have them, then you're lucky. So my point of all of this is that I am very grateful that the sheriff and his team have taken the time to do all of this. Yeah, maybe, you know, the presentation and the start of it wasn't all that, you know, a little rocky start, but I enjoy seeing the community come out and care of it, because the numbers have gone down. In 2003, there were over 15,000 animals that were humanely euthanized or killed. I'm really happy to see that, you know, we can brag about these things now. Do kitties belong out in the community? I mean, the Humane Society is not for or against cats being outside. We just want them all to be spayed or neutered. That's why we opened our low-cost spay-neuter and wellness facility. And it does work, but unfortunately, it takes education from the community, something that the sheriff is proposing on education, to me, is very vital. Because if you have a cat and you can't keep it, and you see people feeding cats, then you just put it out there with them because they're taking care of it. And that's not really the answer. I, you know, personally, I'm opposed to having cats outside because they deserve a better life. And I think that being outside is not the better life. But I can't oppose him putting them back out when I don't have a better answer. If you have a better answer, then bring it forward. Otherwise, the only other answer is to kill them in the shelter. And obviously, this community did not like that, because we opposed, came up here before county commission of years ago, not that many, opposing animals being killed in the shelter. So you have to find some happy median, and as best as I can tell, he has worked very diligently for the last year or two trying to resolve that issue, and you can't make everyone happy, but if you can find a halfway point, then so be it. The Humane Society has taken in almost 60 to 70% every year of the animals in our shelter are strays. I could refuse them and send them to the county because we get zero tax dollars. I have to raise $2 million a year to run our facility all, you know, by ourselves. But that's what donors are for, and private citizens and grants. And my choice is to help the county as much as I can by taking in almost 900 stray animals a year out of the 1,800 we get, and help the county in that regard so that we have a place to put them as well. So we enjoy the partnership, as do, I'm sure, the SPCA and all the other rescues that work with the sheriff to make this possible. So for that, I just wanted to tell you all I'm very grateful that he, at least, with all the other things he has to take care of, he's trying to do something in the benefit of the animals. And I really do appreciate y'all's time on it as well, because this piece of legislation has so many wonderful parts to it that I would hate to see the baby thrown out with the bathwater, particularly with tethering and when you're talking about things for the spay-neutering and the trust fund, I just think it's really an awesome thing, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Beckett and Dee Drennan, you'll be next, if you would come forward and be ready.
Hi, I'm Glenn Beckett, 4180 Pond Apple Street, Grant, Florida. I believe all my questions have been basically answered. I represent Grant Animal Clinic. I'm half-owner of it. I'd like to thank Sheriff Ivy and the Animal Services for not only listening but acting on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dee Drennan? And Eileen Bagilevio, if you'd come forward?
My name is Drennan. I'm a longtime resident at Hillsdale Drive in Cocoa. I wrote this letter a while ago to the commission, if you'll allow me to read it into your record. Dear Commission, it was a serious mistake in the year 2014 on the part of this commission when it put the animal control function under the sheriff department and discontinued euthanasia as a solution to the county stray cat problem, and attempting to control the problem with a trap, neuter, and return to the neighborhood scheme. The problem has mushroomed since then, and it is growing. The sheriff has assumed a conflict of interest, and on the one hand, being asked to defend private property rights, and with the other hand, dump stray cats in neighborhoods against the wishes of the property owners. The scheme is obviously unworkable, even if a significant number of strays were so treated, because for each one treated, there are hundreds of others that will not be, thus guaranteeing continuation and worsening of the problem. The scheme is a token, superficial appeasement of a few animal rights advocates whose hearts might seem to be in the right place, but whose minds are at a distance from reality, and whose voice and influence is far out of proportion to the rest of the citizens involved. The scheme includes the feeding of stray cats in arbitrarily selected neighborhoods at feral colonies at taxpayer expense, against the wishes of the property owners involved, and even against their knowledge. Now, this is unconscionable misuse of taxes, especially when considering the large number of homeless, hungry humans in the county. A virtual rabies epidemic is rumored here, mostly attributable to stray cats. This was emphasized last week when a local motorist sitting in her vehicle was attacked by a rabid cat. Rabies is just one of the diseases from this source, some of which are transmissible to humans. There is a toxoplasmosis epidemic among the dolphin population in the local lagoon, attributable to runoff from stray cats. In addition, feline leukemia, FIV immune system virus, parvo, worms, distemper, fleas, et cetera, along with the disagreeable odors and noises they create. House pets can no longer be let outdoors because of the probability of being infected. Each one of these creatures is responsible for killing large numbers of birds and other wildlife, and since they are naturally nocturnal, most people don't realize the seriousness of the problem. It's time for this commission to recognize and admit its error and reverse the action it wrongly took in discontinuing euthanization and moving the problem to the sheriff department, and in no way further exacerbate the problem by favorably considering this most and in no way further exacerbate the problem by favorably considering this most recent May I deliver this to the commission?
Thank you, sir. Do I give that to the clerk? Okay. Thank you, sir. Ms. Bagilevio and Ms. Maraglia, Lynn Maraglia, you'll be next.
Hi there. My name is Eileen Bagilevio. I'm at 2295 Woodlawn Circle, Melbourne. I had a whole big, you know, helium-filled speech prepared, but thank you, Sheriff, for making us aware of the changes that are much needed. As you can see, when you talk about our little furry family, a lot of people get really upset. And I applaud how you went about and tried to alleviate a lot of our concerns. The only thing I have, you know, in question that I'm concerned about is the no-hold on the bringing in of the cats and it's usually cats, not dogs. That is still a concern of mine. I really hope that we could possibly hold that for further discussion. That would be, that would be my dream ticket. Again, I really, this has been great. This is my first time here. This is a great, great system we have. In Brevard County, the secret's getting out again. A lot of people are heading here. So let's try to make this the best, you know, especially with our extended family. Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Maraglia, and after that will be Eva Naj Mahali. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name's Lynn Maraglia. I live in Melbourne, District Five, and thank you all very much for this opportunity. One thing I do want to say before I go into my thing here is the public actually hasn't seen the proposed ordinance at this point. You guys have it, but the public's never seen it. So I would like to know that you intend to have a public hearing or to take input from the public based on whatever the new ordinance, proposed ordinance, has written in it. I know people were going to write this weekend, and I told them to hold off because I had heard there was going to be a different one. I looked Monday, it wasn't there. So people who had input didn't send it because I told them not to until we saw the new one, but the new one wasn't available. So I'm hoping that you will still consider having public input on the new proposed ordinance. In 2008, I started the brevardlostpets.com website to help pets get reunited in our county. And as a result of speaking to numerous owners of pets that end up at the shelter, I've learned that many of our citizens live check to check, and some of them cannot afford to reclaim their pets at the current fees. They've actually had to forfeit. So I'm asking that none of the fees change for a sterilized pet. If a sterilized pet comes in and the owner wants to reclaim their pet, I ask that the current fees be the fees that are applied and also that the impoundment fee be waived because it's moving to 70, which right now it's 35, so it's quite a hit. For an intact pet, I would like it to be considered that when they're trying to reclaim their pet, that they're given an option. They can pay the fees and get their pet back, or they could pay an adoption fee and have that pet spayed or neutered at the shelter, which is what would happen to the pet anyway if it was kept and the owner couldn't reclaim it. Benefits of that is that the pet now would not be able, wouldn't be competing with other animals at the shelter who do need a new home. This pet already has a home, and it can go out quickly. The other thing is that if that pet should get out again, it won't be contributing to any unwanted litters. My other concern has to do with microchips, which we're discussed, but studies have shown no microchip is 100 percent detectable. And I can send you a link to that, to those studies. So if a pet comes in and they have no microchip, the shelter will insert a microchip without the owner's permission. This is being done before the owner is notified or anything. I would like that the owner has an option on whether a microchip is put in their pet. One, because there might be a microchip in their pet already, it's just not detected. And the other thing, not everybody can afford to add another $20 to the reclaim fee that, which is being charged even though they didn't ask for the, even, they didn't ask for the chip. Also, in Section 1444H, under the empowerment of animals, it talks about immediately euthanizing a pet that meets a certain criteria if that pet's not wearing ID or does not have a registered microchip. Again, a microchip is not 100 percent detectable, so you could be killing an animal that is under stress that other people have explained and is owned, is registered, it's just that the chip didn't, doesn't show up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Naj Mahala and Barry Enman, if you would come forward, sir.
Hello. My name is Eva Naj Mahali, and I reside at 3413 Willowood in District Three. First, I want to thank Sheriff Ivy and everyone in his staff and everyone that helps him for the great, great results we have in this county. It's not perfect, but God, this world is not perfect. We know it. So to those people that want to say that what we're doing, and I put "we" because anyone who cares about animals and people will always want to help the unfortunate, and euthanizing may be a very permanent solution, but is not humane, period. So therefore, we are where we are, and we should follow through on it in all the manners that we can in each individual district, that you have people that are feeding animals or helping animals and not asking for any pay. Whatever you can do or lead other people to help them do it. Because there is a large group of people, me, I'm out there too, but on a very small scale. I help friends who need help for their animals. I help the animals that come directly, but please don't drop any more animals at my house. They need our help, and we will continue to do it. This resolution, as I first read it, and thank you, Florida Today, for printing it because I didn't know this was even going on. I do read the paper daily. I do keep the paper for local news, and I need to know what is going on, so if I need to say something, I'll be here. So anyway, it was good to find out. I came running down here today, canceled other things because this is important. You need to know that everybody does care. A few are just not knowledgeable enough. One thing, I wish that somehow we can educate people to know that that clipped ear on a cat means they've been, they've had their rabies shots, they're being taken care of, someone out there cares for them. And because of all the help and all the work that people are doing, be it the vets, be it the feral cat people, be it the, anyone who helps, give them your support, be it with money, with the extra help, but make sure that the few who do not understand are not the ones that gain the loudest voice. They have solutions, but let's remember, we are a humane society, and I mean that for all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Enman, and following that, I had one more card turned, and number 14, Mr. LaSalle, you'll be next.
Okay. I'm Barry Enman. I'm the epidemiologist for the Brevard County Health Department, and I wanted to speak. There had been some statements that have said here, but before I get into that, I just want to say, the nurses who work with our animal control program have been very accolades about the Sheriff Ivy when they took over the program. It has improved dramatically because, as you know, we have people that are bit, scratched, or whatever, and then many times, we may have to offer prophylaxis so we keep our humans, of course, from getting, our public from getting rabies and whatever. And they say working with them has been extremely smooth and has been very, very, very efficient. And the folks who do the animal control there and working with our health department has been great. But I wanted to speak just briefly on toxoplasmosis. Now, I've been studying this disease for many years. I guess my first introduction to it after I graduated from Florida was with our HIV/AIDS patients. Now, first off, many of us get exposed to toxo because we have cats. The number one way people get exposed to is eating raw beef. So in the other parts of the world who do a lot of that, they get exposed to it, but most people do not get sick. They become asymptomatic. Your immune system will control it. The problem comes in with toxoplasmosis if you lose your immune system, which happens, you know, sometimes with HIV/AIDS patients. Now, even with HIV/AIDS patients now, we don't see that very much because of medications have improved dramatically with them, so. And I look back, 10 years looking back, for toxoplasmosis among, you know, our community here, and we did not have one single human case, of course, with that. So it's extremely rare that we see that, but we are exposed to it. But because we have generally a healthy immune system, generally we do very well. Cats, they get exposed to it most times from catching rodents or digging into their dirt or what have you, or maybe eating, you know, raw beef or meat on some occasions, of course, of course, with that. And cats, once they acquire it, they're only communicable for about 10 to 20 days. Now, the incubation, if we get exposed to it, and like I said, most of us get exposed to it, and we don't even know that we have it or what have you, incubation is anywhere from a week to about a month, of course, with that. But this isn't a problem. I don't expect it to be a problem, whether you want to talk about feral cats and what other, what other situations, of course, with it. And I just want to mention one thing. We do not have a rabies outbreak, you know, in our county. You know, our immunization rates are very good. Of course, we'd like it to get better, of course, with that, and we're very, very careful with the bites that we have to protect the humans that we have in this county. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. LaSalle.
I'm John LaSalle, Heritage Isle Viera. I'd like to start off by requesting that you table the acceptance of this until more input could come in. The people in front of me were eloquent and brought up all kinds of things I didn't consider. It was nice to hear that a whole lot of the things that we were rejecting to have been taken out by the sheriff or by the attorneys. Thankless job. I used to be a volunteer at the shelter. You just can't win. You just can't please everybody. But let me start by refuting a couple of things. The very first thing, no reports of toxoplasmosis. Florida Today reported last year, a landscaper died of toxoplasmosis. Of course, a landscaper's involved with, you know, digging around the dirt. Guess where all the toxo is? It's in the dirt, it's in the flower beds. It's out there. Two days ago, it was reported, the young actor that acted as Captain James T. Kirk's son died of toxoplasmosis. It does affect humans. The sheriff, who apparently the sheriff and other people wrote this thing, has agreed to all the changes, and I think we need a hearing, separate, a workshop, whatever, so all the other people that didn't know this was coming can get their two cents in. There are a whole bunch of things that have been taken out that we rejected to. The one that hasn't been taken out that really bothers me personally is let's take feral cats and say, you feed them, you get a fine. That's in there. Let's take feral cats and call them community cats and waive them from everything. Community cats, nobody's responsible, nobody owns them, they're causing any damage, you can't go talk to anybody about it. They're feral. They're out of control in this county. In 2014 or thereabouts, before the sheriff took over, they had 500 registered feral cat colonies, several hundred thousand in the whole county. Who knows what they are now. When you go and ask how many feral cat colonies and how many feral cats are out there, no answer, no, no number. But if you extrapolate from 2014 to now, a few hundred thousand, it's going to be several more hundred thousand. They're out there. They're out there. You see them if you go to Sam's in Cocoa, you're out there. If you go to the shelter, the park and right across from the shelter is a big feral cat colony. You go to Canova Park, the feral cat colony. We don't know where all of them are, but there are a lot of them. I was, I have to read this because this is handed to me. Rabies may be shed before their symptoms, so cats that go right back out could be rabid. It takes 28 days for the first vaccination to be in effect. Manufacturers require a one-year vaccine, then three-year vaccine, and it's hard to keep track of. When you see a clipped ear cat, you know they've been through the system, you know they've been neutered, excellent. You know they've been given a shot. They're only effective for a year. If they don't get captured again and get more vaccine, then they're out there, possibly rabies carriers. And if you go see who the people are feeding the cats, you'll almost always see a raccoon or two or three chase the cats away. When they get finished eating, the cats come back. You can, you'll see it over and over. So I'd like to see you table this and have more input from the public. A lot of us weren't even know this was coming, and it's changed it so much, maybe I'm objecting to nothing, but the changes, the people that spoke in front of me, excellent points. I'd like to see something done. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're finished with all of the public comment cards, commission. Do you have any questions or? Sheriff Ivy, did you want to make any final comments, sir?
Again, I just want to start out and thank the members of our community that came in today to support or disagree with the ordinance. Again, like I said at the very beginning, everybody hopefully is passionate about saving animals, and that's, that's what makes us the community we are. If you'll permit me, we kind of tried to keep track of some of the concerns and be able to offer to commission some of that. One of the concerns was us, the ordinance, saying that we shall immediately euthanize animals that are sick or anything of that nature. We don't do that. As you can see from the numbers that we represented earlier, our goal is to save as many animals as possible, not euthanize. So in fact, when we go back to that block of ice I spoke of earlier, littered throughout that block of ice was the word "shell," and that was in the draft. And for the record, the draft was not leaked out. It was done through a public records request, and county attorney handled it exactly as they should by putting it out. It was not cut down from the block of ice at that time. So, but at that time, we took out just repeatedly the word "shell" and put in the word "may," which gives our veterinarian and our team the abilities to evaluate each and every animal that comes in. We heard about us scanning animals. We scan each and every animal that comes in. We use the absolute best scanners that money can buy. I hate to tell you that, as the commission, but we do. We use the absolute best equipment that's out there, and we test our scanners each and every day to make sure that they're functioning. As I said, we do not return sick, injured, or geriatric cats or kittens to the field. They have to be over three pounds, and actually, we have created a partnership with out-of-state partners that actually take most of our kittens, and we transport them up there. We actually, volunteers from our team, transport them up there, and we fund those trips through the Pet Posse, which is our not-for-profit that we started to help us and to help all of our other local rescues. Our live release rate for dogs is one of the highest in the country. It is actually over 99 percent. When you exclude just the dogs, it's over 99 percent. Study after study and agency after agency are providing, are doing, return to field is safe and the right thing to do. I would ask the gentleman that came up with the letter, I think he said his letter was dated 2014. Is that, is that correct?
I have this January 22nd, 2018, sir. It's today's.
Oh, 2018, okay. I thought, I thought he said 2014, because we, we did not return, start our return to field. field program until 2016. And interesting number is in 2016, I think it was just over 500 that were returned to field, and in 2017, it was 663 that were returned to field from, from our aspect. The Dangerous Dog Council is going to a magistrate system. That is following the best practice that this industry standards throughout the country. We did our research on that. And actually, it's what we use here in Brevard County for code enforcement as well. So the magistrate is familiar with the rules of law, gives everybody the chance to come in and speak and to be heard in an orderly and law, and law-driven fashion. And so I think that's absolutely the reason that it is part of the best practice scenarios. Education, one of our, one of our citizens spoke about, they would like to see an education component of it on the feral cats, especially with the ear tip. And that is a great point and we have already started putting together our education component as the ordinance will require. And we're actually going to start educating at a very young age in elementary school so that we create a generational change. And one of those components will be what a, what a feral cat and the ear tip stands for and what it means. So great suggestion by one of our citizens and I think it absolutely applies to what we're doing. And that, I think that addresses the overwhelming majority of them. The only other one that I would address is in Attachment A, someone had spoke to some changes going to $70 or something of that nature. The only two fees that are changing from what the current ordinance is, in other words, if we take the current schedule of payments in the ordinance or fees in the ordinance, the only two that change are registration fee for a duplicate tag, which goes from $2 to $6, and the board per day that goes from $6 to $10. Other than that, everything else is staying exactly the same as it is in the ordinance today.
Thank you. Commissioner Isnardi.
Yes, and I told you I was probably going to have questions for you at the meeting. I'll reserve some of my personal opinions regarding community cats and, and public safety and health. I understand and I appreciate a lot of the changes you made because you did address many of the concerns in the community and I can't thank you enough. I, I have many people that have said, it's so much better when you took over because it was an absolute disaster before. And I won't go into all the, all the flaws of the past, but...
I will say, if you'll permit me ma'am, that is a direct credit to our team, our volunteers. As I tell everybody, I'm surrounded by great people and I'm smart enough to stay out of their way and they, they deserve all that credit.
Well, I thank you for what you're doing. I just, I, I am on the other end of it as far as the complaints that I get regarding a lot of these now-called community cats, feral cats, you know, on people's private property and at Canova Beach and at places where the public should have, you know, the freedom to roam without worrying about, you know, either stepping in, you know, excrement or having to deal with a lot of cats or having to deal with, you know, repairing their vehicles or dealing with urination in their flower beds and, you know, and I, and I, again, we could go into, you know, whether or not a cat sprays after it's fixed or not, but I can tell you, being a rescue cat person myself, they do. I mean, especially depending on the age of, of spay or neuter. But anyhow, what, what are we doing differently or how are we going to move forward? Because really, feral cat colonies, because that's what they are, are designed to eliminate and, or to shrink in numbers. And we somehow, and I know people dump their animals, I know people don't spay or neuter and we can't take that kind of responsibility, but what are we doing to improve that situation?
Well, first is our goal, and I think I speak for everybody here and certainly probably everybody in the community, is to see a very humane decline in the number of, of feral cats or free-roaming or, or community cats that we have. That's our ultimate goal, is to, to see that decline. So to get there, I think what we have to do, and it's not going to happen overnight, it didn't get broken overnight, it's not going to get fixed overnight. But we, we have a very conscious effort that we are focused on and it's really a multi-tier aspect. Education and awareness is like anything else in our, our business or in any business really, is the key to, to stopping it long-term. We, we believe that the, in fact, industry standards show it, that the spay-neuter aspect, it helps not only control and stabilize the population, but it also works to control the demeanor of the cats that are, that are out there so that they're not doing the things they were doing before they were picked up, aggressive and, and all the other things. So, you know, it's a multi-tier. You know, for example, the education component and, and the aspect of compliance in feeding, that's a, that's a big issue. And I think the Department of Health could probably speak to that. There's an appropriate time to feed. If you're feeding late at night, you're actually inviting wildlife to intertwine with the cats and that's where you get some of your, your rabies concerns. So we're, we're working with those people that their, their heart and their passion is to help these animals. We're working with them so they know how to, to feed them. We know, working with them, the appropriate mechanisms, the type of things, not to litter, to pick up all the, the remnants of it and everything. So it's a multi-tier aspect from it, but I, at the end of it, what I can say is that's our goal. Our goal is to see a significant decline in that aspect. And that's, that's not only a goal for our, our citizens, that's a goal for the animals as well. It's not, it's not something that any of us enjoy seeing.
And I understand, being in the position you are, you know, being an animal lover and rescuer myself, you know, you, you have to find that balance between, you know, what truly is humane for the animal because is taking a domestic animal, introducing it to the wild. And, you know, I've, I've done my research on this for several years ago because my husband was a actual expert witness in a couple of judges' courtrooms back when he worked for Animal Services, wrote, wrote a white paper on it. So I, I actually took a great interest in it because I never understood the logic behind releasing a domesticated animal into the wild. And I know that, you know, we want to save all the animals and we, no one wants to do anything to harm the animals, but I think that's the growth, that's the most inhumane thing that you can do. So anything toward the end means of eliminating these populations, I mean, for their own sake. I mean, I think it's terrible that we think this is okay. I mean, I, you only have to live in the compound where I live, where these animals get dumped off all the time, to see it, to see these animals malnourished, to see them. And they're free-roaming animals that people just dump off. And like I said, I've had two myself, one was rubbing up against my leg when I'd get into my car, so I know that somebody dumped it out there. Wasn't my neighbor's cats, there's only three of those in the neighborhood, so...
Yes ma'am.
I mean, I do what I can, I guess, as a citizen, but we can't expect, you know, people to step up and take all these cats in either. So there's got to be, is there other communities that have made these programs work, these feral? Because I think maybe...
Yes. I have a couple of studies. Oh, sure, I have a couple of studies right here, but Alachua County is the one that you'll be most familiar with, of course, because it's in Florida. But in two years with a return to field program for ferals and friendlies, they found a 66% reduction in their feral cat population, community cat population. And San Jose, California, over the course of four years, has seen a 70-plus percent reduce, reduction in their community cat, feral cat population with their return to field program. And studies show that Dr. Levy, Julie Levy, has done studies out of the University of Florida to show that these cats are, some are sickly and they come to the shelter, we treat them, we take care of them. But the ones that are found at the address that they're, they're healthy, fat and sassy, being fed by multiple people in the neighborhood. And we only return them exactly to that same address. We do not, we don't, we don't return them to the wild and we only return them if they're healthy. So it works and that's our ultimate goal is to stabilize the population and to decrease the population. I've seen it happen in my own neighborhood, in Charleston, South Carolina, I've seen it happen in other counties around the country. And we're on the forefront, we're a progressive county for having this program.
And is it realistic, once those numbers get lower, say in a certain area where they're populated, to try to move them towards rescues? Like if the numbers get down?
Yes, absolutely.
So we can at least try to stop the trend in a certain area?
Yeah, once we can stabilize the numbers and the cat intake, the cat population goes down, the cat intake goes down, then it's instead of quantity, we have quality time with them. So what do you need? We'll give you the quality care that you need because we're not dealing with this huge quantity that's out of control. So that's our goal is to, to get away from quantity and get into quality. And we already are at the shelter, quality medicine with animals that we, that we get in our care now and versus having to worry about hundreds and hundreds of cats that would otherwise be euthanized.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah.
And one more comment or question for the sheriff.
Yes ma'am.
As far as a magistrate goes, I mean, it's going to operate like most magistrate hearings to where, I mean, you'll be able to produce, you'll be able to plead your, I say plead your case, but you'd be able to discuss the conditions of the case.
Absolutely.
So like in the instance that was brought up by the doctor, I mean, that's obvious to us non-professionals up here, that circumstance of an animal protecting its owner. And, and if they need to bring in experts, if they need to bring in behavioralists, I mean, if someone's going to deem my dog dangerous, given the fines. But I, I like that there's, that there is that impartial, non-emotional magistrate in the room because who understands the law, who understands the rights of the person that's injured and otherwise? Because I know that's sort of what got me talking to you guys even about this animal ordinance.
You're right, and that's, that's the exact model of it is...